What are you taking?
I'm taking a seat.
I'm sorry. Twenty years, Michelle?
No.
Huh!
She's not that old.
That's what I said, she doesn't look twenty years old.
I started when I was ten.
You're gonna be my Shelbya. You'll be another Shelbya.
Who's your sidekick?
Um, I can't reach that far.
Yeah, by one step.
I think that's fair.
You're going to go in there?
Hope it's different from yesterday.
This is like all the change.
Okay. Oh, shall we make one? There she is. Testing the next line.
My money's worth on you today, bro.
Forty-two things on here. I see you make it, Scoop. Yes. But it cost us fifty. It cost us fifty. And they're paying us thirteen.
It's not like I'm going anywhere.
So she's here full-time?
No, two and a half days. During school.
Well, I see we got a salary board here, but I don't see any agenda for the salary board.
It's in there.
It is?
Yeah. It's long. And it's long.
That's good.
So what's it happens when you guys had a week off? That's what it is. You've got both sides of the paper. You've got that three-week break in between meetings. Two jars work. Yeah, two jars work.
I'd rather have a jackknife, you know, that works better. I don't think it was carrying in here.
All right, everyone, please rise for the flag. The flag to the left.
To the right. Ode to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's the last meeting?
Second, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, two minutes of last meeting, questions or comments?
Pursuant to item four where we amend then approve.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
We have some service recognitions. First of all, we have Michelle Gerald, domestic relations, twenty years. If you want to come on up here. Congratulations. And then we have Janet DePue with five years of service. Janet? All right, I guess Reuben's not here?
No.
Motion to recess the measures meeting, open a salary board.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Nine oh two.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes of June 25th, 26th.
Second. Motion by Treasury Benedict, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, two minutes of June 25th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I can't do four because I wasn't there because I didn't go.
Motion to approve item number four.
Right. I'll second that.
And how can they pick the minutes if they...
It's just saying there was... Yeah, there wasn't a meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number five.
You're standing for five or four?
For four.
Motion to approve item number five, it's listed on the agenda.
Second.
Second by Treasury Benedict, the public defender is here, you also have a vote in this. Questions or comments on five? Yes?
It says here the salary is set at $24,000 per year without benefits.
Right.
And will they ever get benefits?
No.
And why is like a public defender even not getting benefits?
Public defender does get benefits, this is a part-time position.
It's an assistant to the public defender, so the assistant...
It's a part-time position.
Because it's part-time, is that it?
Yes.
Linda can't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake.
I've been here way too long.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Thank you.
Item number six.
Motion to approve item number six, it's listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Treasury Benedict, to approve item six on the agenda, questions or comments? Yes?
Says here, change compensation for deputy warden, position to $42,500 per year, and what was it before?
Thirty-nine nine.
And the same amount of hours? Forty hours per week?
Forty hours plus, yeah.
Actually worked for that.
And what, who is, what is the name for the deputy warden?
Uh, Joshua. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item seven.
Motion to eliminate position of non-union 911 coordinator and to create the new full-time non-union position of assistant director of public safety slash 911 coordinator, salary forty-eight-five per year, forty hours per week.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven five.
You don't have it now. What do you say? Yeah, hers is, mine says forty-seven five.
Forty-seven five.
Forty-seven five.
I think we should give him forty-eight. All right. Forty-seven.
Second.
Motion by Treasury Benedict, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item seven on the agenda, questions or comments? Yes?
Is there a person in that position now?
Yes. Well, no, that position's a combined, a new position that's being created that that person's going into.
Who is the person that's in that position?
Well, part of that position right now is Art Donato, so he's picking up additional responsibilities and different, an additional work skill.
So basically what you're doing is, you have someone in that position at a salary, and you are creating a new position and putting the same guy in that new position?
Now, what we're doing is, the position he had is getting eliminated, new position is getting created, which is part of the old, which is all of the old position, plus new responsibilities and additional stuff on top.
And does he live in the county?
Yes.
And he's working from the county offices, or where does he work from?
Absolutely.
I thought he was working also in the Scranton area. No, never?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight?
Motion to approve item number eight. Create? Okay, I mean, then we're gonna eliminate. Well, she can, they can vote. Go ahead, make it.
Make it.
A motion, upon request by the predonatory clerk of courts to create the union position a second deputy predonatory slash domestic relations, salary pay range thirteen, effective August 24th, 2014, and to eliminate one second deputy predonatory position and the predonatory part-time clerk typist position.
Second.
Okay, I got motion by predonatory Sue Edelston, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item nine.
Motion by myself, upon request of the predonatory clerk of courts to change the non-union first deputy clerk of courts position from an hourly to a salary, salary start range of $22,000 to $28,000 per year, forty hours per week, effective August 21st, 2014.
Second. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, second, yeah.
We are eliminating a part-time position.
That was the one before.
Before, eliminated the position.
Right.
Combining duties.
Right.
From that eliminated position into this one position, right?
Right. That was eight. We're on nine now.
I understand, I just want to make sure we got the wording right, that we have eliminated the correct position.
Right.
Combined of the right two positions.
Right.
And roll it into one, because it's...
We eliminated one second deputy predonatory and one clerk typist and made...
One of those is part-time.
Correct.
Okay? And made them one.
Correct.
Any other questions on nine?
I'll second it. Kathy second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item ten.
Motion by myself, predonatory clerk of courts to change the non-union first deputy predonatory position from an hourly to a salary, salary start range of $22,000 to $28,000 per year, forty hours per week, effective August 21st, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Treasury Edelston, second by Treasurer Kathy Benedict, item ten, questions or comments?
And who's the person in that position?
Well, the person as my...
We don't have one yet.
Predonatory.
We haven't voted on that.
Yeah, we haven't voted, it'll be in the commissioners' meeting.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven.
Motion, upon request of registered recorder to change the non-union first deputy register wells and clerk of the organs court position from hourly to salary, salary start range of $22,000 to $28,000 per year, forty hours per week, effective August 21st, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Recorder Mary Evans, second by Treasurer Benedict, to approve item eleven, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twelve.
Motion, upon request of registered recorder to create the non-union position of first deputy recorder of deeds, salary start range of $22,000 to $28,000 per year, forty hours per week, effective August 21st, 2014.
Second.
Motion by registered recorder Mary Evans, second by Treasurer Benedict, to approve item twelve, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirteen.
A motion by me, upon, by my request to create the non-union position of first deputy treasurer position, salary start range of $22,000 to $28,000 per year, forty hours per week, effective August 21st, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Benedict, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item thirteen on the agenda, questions or comments?
Why is all this happening? You have a whole group of them, is there any explanation you can give us, why all of a sudden all...
These are first deputy positions that are created, so the first deputies can take and be in charge when the elected official's out, that's per the county code 1620, so that's why these are going to be in there. All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen.
Okay, motion by the treasurer to create the non-union position of first deputy tax claim, that should say director. Salary start range of $22,000 to $28,000 per year, forty hours per week, effective August 21st, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Benedict, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item fourteen on the agenda, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on the salary board?
Motion to close salary board, return to commissioners' meeting.
Second that, all in favor? Aye, back to Commissioner Jean Greco. Item number...
Seven. Motion to re-convert commissioners' meeting at...
Nine oh seven. Night time, so. I'll second that, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Item number eight.
Motion to approve item number eight, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item eight on the agenda, the ratification of the cash disbursements, electronic transfers. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine.
Motion to approve item number nine, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item nine on the agenda, ratifying and approving the following semi-requests and payments. Questions or comments? Yes?
On a lot of these, of all of them, in this case, of number nine, there is no, there doesn't seem to be any co-pay from the state or the feds, and usually the cost of the county is little, is less, and this time we pick up the full cost.
Depends on what the summoners report, Bruce, is whether they pick some of it up or not.
So it's just serendipitous that every one of these is picked up by the county? Just the way, just the way the dice roll today?
I think, I think you're absolutely correct from what I'm seeing, Bruce.
They have, they have the sort of, yeah.
Yeah.
They're all, have to go to these things.
And none of these have any state or federal reimbursement on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried, item ten.
Motion to approve item number ten, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item ten, exoneration for the tax claim bureau. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eleven.
Uh, motion to approve item number eleven, as listed on the agenda, didn't get any.
You got one, down there, open it up. Second that. See if you want to award it or if we're gonna sit on it.
Bid for BMW, $7,777.77 from Chris Marcho. Seven thousand?
All right, motion to order.
Motion to award the bid. Chris Marcho, Clifford.
Questions or comments?
What is it again, seven thousand?
$777.77.
I like that, all sevens.
Any other questions?
Should be lucky.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item twelve.
Motion to approve item number twelve, as listed on the agenda, we got any for those?
Second that, you got all piled up there, bro. Everybody wants a John Deere tractor.
Right color, right Alton?
Oh, wrong color.
The right color. Got a pocket knife on you, Alton, can open these with.
He wasn't allowed in the courthouse.
Looked like a regular terrorist, Alton, I'm gonna take your pocket knife away from you. Like to bid $1,256. Alan Cyvers, Montrose. Eric Township. Here, Eric, the office, bedroom yard, ten eighty, John Deere, pair to bid of $1,510. That's from Eric Township.
You going up, Alton?
Stony Mountain tractor parts. Equipment bid, John Deere tractor with forks. $3,855. I can't tell, the broom, they have an additional $350.
It's all, it's all part of it, so it's all, so be forty...
Yeah, that's...
Be forty-one, forty-two oh five, right? Gets better, get one more double, again, we'll be in good shape.
That was from Stony Mountain tractor personally. What's that noise?
Backup boogie.
John Deere tractor, seventeen fifty-two, from Jim Garner. John Deere tractor from Kenny Janoski. $511. All right, looks like Stony Mountain gets it.
Motion for forty-two oh five.
Motion to approve the bid of Stony Mountain tractor parts.
I'll second that, questions or comments? All in favor? Hey, item thirteen.
Ooh, twelve thirteen, motion to approve item number thirteen.
Second that.
Transportation buses, listed on the agenda, what do we have for these, two? Cosmelo Auto Sales. Ford bus, $450. Autoplex. Hammond, Indiana. Motion to approve the bid of Chicago Autoplex Inc. from Hammond, Indiana.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bills are done. Now we're down to number fourteen.
Fourteen.
There are no bids for the monitors requesting a motion to summon the salvage.
They're junk. Yeah, motion to approve, summon the salvage.
Second that.
Beat up, that's what we don't need.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, a motion to approve item number fifteen, as listed on the agenda?
Second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item fifteen on the agenda, questions or comments? Yes?
Is that going to be used for a specific department?
Yeah, it's going for assessment.
Oh, sorry.
Replaces the one that was total. And there was three bids, and the oldest bid was the one that's getting awarded to Simmons Rockwell. The other two were, two of them were in the twenties, one of them nineteen. Any other questions?
Yeah, how, is this gonna be financed through one of the banks?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen.
Motion to approve item number sixteen, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item sixteen on the agenda, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number seventeen, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item seventeen on the agenda, questions or comments?
Could you imagine it to read Warden from the clerk instead of Ward?
Where is Scoop? Yes.
But the spell check, right?
Spell check is not your friend. I didn't check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eighteen.
Motion to approve item number eighteen, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item eighteen on the agenda, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item nineteen.
Motion to approve item number nineteen, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item nineteen on the agenda, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty.
Motion to approve item number twenty, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item twenty on the agenda, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number twenty-one, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item twenty-one on the agenda, questions or comments?
How many part-time corrections officers do you have?
Uh, they're supposed to be carrying, I think it's five, and I think they got three right now.
And I'm seeing like all women's names, are they all women? Is this for the women's division?
Well, we don't discriminate because of their race or their orientation or anything else, so.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm asking that you discriminate, I'm just wondering, you got all women here, and they're doing the whole jail, because you have a division of men and women, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-two.
Why are we doing that? We just got rid of one, the dole permits were over, now we're, what, what's that, are we gonna hire Lisa?
No, Sarah got a better job right in the middle of the process, she got a full-time job.
Right. That's the twenty-eighth, that's retroactive.
So, so she was in there helping you, so...
Yeah, I have four open positions, I always carry four open positions, and we bring people in to work until the dole permits are issued. So, Sarah came in, part-time, worked for a few days.
I understand that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then she came in and took her spot.
So we are ratifying...
Right.
If you read it, it looks like we're hiring her today to do dole permits.
Okay.
But we aren't, because the dole permits are all gone.
They are gone.
Somebody left, we're ratifying the appointment.
Yes, because Lisa's trying to show...
I, I get it, I get it, but it's confusing, why you...
Technology ratification, for anybody.
Yes.
I don't know.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number twenty-three, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item twenty-three, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion to... Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Motion to approve item number twenty-four, as listed on the agenda.
Motion by, I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item twenty-four on the agenda, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-five.
Motion to approve item number twenty-five, as listed on the agenda.
Second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item twenty-five on the agenda, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number twenty-six, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item twenty-six on the agenda, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-seven.
Motion to approve item number twenty-seven, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall, to approve item twenty-seven on the agenda, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-eight.
Motion to approve item number twenty-eight.
That should be Ruth Harden, H.I.R.D.
Yeah.
And it should be Treasurer Irk, needs an R on the...
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second that.
Yep.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-nine.
I must actually change it first. Yep. Motion to approve item number twenty-nine.
Deputy Tax Claiming Director.
Director. I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item twenty-nine. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Hold up a second here, right? I want to amend my motion on items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine to reflect in the commissioners' meeting. We did this in the salary board. But these are non-union positions. The non-union position of... I want that clear in the commissioners'.
Commissioners also?
Minutes, as well as the salary board. We did it at the salary board, so...
All right.
But let's make it clear that is what we're doing.
All right. I'll agree to that. All right. Item thirty.
Yeah, motion to approve item number thirty is listed on the agenda.
This is also another non-union position. I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item thirty on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty-one, this is also a non-union position.
Motion to approve item number thirty-one with the non-union amendment?
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item thirty-one on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty-two.
Nice motion. I'll be the second deputy. Do the emotion, but she stays in the union, I think, correct?
Yes.
Motion approved thirty-two.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item thirty-two on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty-three.
Yeah, motion to approve item number thirty-three.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item thirty-three on the agenda. The application of the nine oh two grant for the recycling center. Questions or comments?
And where is that grant coming from? Where is that grant coming from?
It's a state grant.
And you need that to continue...
Is that still open? Yes. What did you say?
And you need that to continue open, keeping the recycling center open?
Well, it's funding that's available, grant money that's available. So in the event that we continue to operate it as a county, we want to make sure we at least apply for the grant money so that if we do need it, we can get the money.
And did you ever try and sell it? Did you ever put an ad for that?
It's still in that process. Advertized right now.
Oh, it is advertised?
Yes.
And for what kind of amount? Is there an amount in the advertisement?
No, this one's open for proposals to see what we can get. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty-four.
Fair. Yeah, motion to approve item number thirty-four.
Item thirty-four by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall. We do have a letter from the Borough Force City, from the Borough Council stating that they are in favor of this and ask our blessings on this also. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Could you please explain what fair stands for and where the money is coming from?
Yeah, fair money comes from the Act thirteen money that comes off the top that's held at the state. It's for... It's money that's used for housing and redevelopment. And that's where the money comes from.
No connection with HUD?
No.
Thank you.
And what kind of parameters are in this housing? Is it open to who? What kind of salaries or age?
Our understanding according to this is that it's fifty-five and older. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty-five. That's just the management. Nothing tied to it.
Yeah, but it's... Isn't that between prehab and the Housing Development Authority?
Prehab has to go in separately with the county.
But it's with you.
No, they have their own for the utility and renovation that they do.
So this is separate from what we just did?
Right.
So you're not overseeing prehab in thirty-four. They're on their own?
Right. Prehab, this is the utility rebate that they do and the helping the rent rebate.
Which ties into thirty-six?
Which ties into thirty-six, yes.
I just want to make sure we got our...
Yes.
This is right.
Right. Yeah, thirty-five is just the agreement to do it. Thirty-six is the actual project.
A motion to approve item number thirty-five.
I'll second that. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Motion to approve item number thirty-six is listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion to approve item thirty-six by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall. Questions or comments on thirty-six?
Are these resolutions available on the big table up there?
I have them here. We can get copies.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Republicans, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
On number thirty-five, it's rental assistance, not retail assistance. The application. I didn't know if that was important.
Okay. Thirty-six, you got a question?
Yes, I'd like to know more about what is this pair fund and Act one oh five to provide financial assistance to counties, communities impacted by Marcellus shale industry to address housing needs? What impact are they addressing? What kind of housing needs have been going on? Can you explain that further?
No, but you can definitely call the state and ask them. This is a lot of money that the state takes off the top of the Act thirteen that they provide for housing, and it's grant money that then all the local agencies have to apply for, like prehab, the Housing Authority in every county, to try and get funding to do housing projects that they're trying to do. So the parameters are set by the state on that. It's nothing with the county.
So we have to contact the state, and then who would we contact in the state?
Contact the Housing Authority.
And so they're providing funds to... For rental and utility assistance. Does that mean housing to be built or to be renovated for rental?
Just what it says, rental assistance and utility assistance.
So you mean you're getting part of your rent paid?
Yes.
And this... And then you go... If we're in the county, we go to prehab for that?
Yes. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty-seven.
Motion to approve thirty-seven is on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item thirty-seven on the agenda. Questions or comments? There was two bids on this, and most of it is... All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number thirty-eight is listed on the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item thirty-eight on the agenda. Again, there is three bids on this one also. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Ooh, request for... Motion to approve item number thirty-nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item thirty-nine to request for proposals to replace the windows and doors on the courthouse. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item forty.
That's a matter of that. Motion to approve item number forty.
Second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item forty on the agenda, which is the medical assistance treatment program, the funding for transportation for prehab that administers it. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. And this is where Lisa goes... This has been in place for several years?
Yep.
Goes on a one-year basis?
It goes on a yearly basis, yes.
Judge approved it?
Yep.
Motion to approve item number forty-one.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item forty-one on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
What does the memorandum actually say about the juvenile probation department and Suscana County Schools? What does it say?
It just says that they work in conjunction together to provide probation officers in the school for two and a half days a week. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number forty-two is listed on the agenda.
Second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item forty-two on the agenda. The installation of a river monitor gauge. Questions or comments? Yes.
Number one, what... What is the reason for a remote river monitor gauge? What are you gauging, and where is the river?
The river is at the Suscana River at the... At the connection between the Great Bend Flats and Halsted Borough. The bridge there is where the monitor goes in. The monitor monitors the depth of the water, the height of the water, and that's what they monitor.
So this is purely to determine whether the bridge can withstand certain flood levels?
Well, let's see. I may know how fast the river's rising, so it helps them to determine, you know, whether we have to do evacuations, especially in that area, to take and get the people out and to save them.
All of this is coming from Act thirteen funding?
Right.
Would the same Act thirteen funding fund any kind of a monitor which would determine whether the water is being polluted in any way?
I'll have to check that out.
Thank you.
I can pretty much tell you that water is pretty bad right there.
It's a lot better than it used to be.
All in favor?
Is there a reason? What I'd like to know is, how do you justify using Act thirteen funding for this flood situation, rising of the river?
Because it falls into one of the requirements that you can use the funding for.
And which requirement?
The public safety.
Public health and safety.
If it talks about Act thirteen, which is supposed to be connected with Marcellus shale, flooding is not connected with Marcellus shale. Why would you connect it?
Because we're allowed to. None of the state guidelines.
So if we want to appeal that...
The legislators are the ones that determine what it can be used for, not the county. We have to comply with their guidelines, and that's what we do.
But then you decide what the interpretation of the guideline is.
Well, there's no interpretation. It's pretty black and white.
To you it is?
No.
And then if we want to...
Any other questions?
If we want to appeal it, who are we going to appeal this to?
Any other questions?
Your decision.
Yes.
We had a resolution to enter into a cooperation agreement for administration of a portion of the fair funds we were doing. It looks like it's missed on the agenda. It went with the number thirty-four.
I'll have to check that out. Give me a second. Any other questions on forty-two? Yes.
Who would we appeal to regarding the use of funds? You said legislators. Who in particular would we be appealing to? Would we be appealing to our state senators and representatives both?
Sure.
On behalf of the forty-two, I want to say thank you. I've been through several floods. And I appreciate the warnings.
Not everyone lives on top of the hill.
That's right.
In this county.
Any other thoughts?
Well, you can use the funds from general fund.
All in favor?
Aye.
What is the status of the other river gauges? Because I know they were scaling back and...
Yeah, they were. That's one of the problems.
Like Windsor, and that's what I thought.
The one that was there is not functioning.
So we... I mean, we based off of Windsor and went up in Windsor and went down.
We put one there, or one ways away.
Probably. Confluent, well, Confluent has the flood gauge that we base off of.
We need a one of Halsted along.
We're not even acknowledging, though, the N E P that there's a river in our county. You seen that, little shoe?
The only other one I had was the one that was for the fair funding for the proposal for the... For... Looks like the halfway house.
There should have been a cooperation agreement.
I see one on that one.
While we're doing that, public comment?
All right, Alton. Yeah, you look, Alton. What do you got, Alton?
I'd like to have a commissioner looking at this here where we have drainage in the U.S. Department and the Corps of Ensign here to control every bit of our water, whether it's a drainage ditch, soil, or any kind of water, from your firm or anything. And I'd like to have a commissioner come up with something on it by the next meeting so it can be approved.
Do you have some type of information on it so we can...
I'll give it to you. I haven't got it with me.
Okay, you'll get it.
I gave it to a drain member last Thursday night, and I should have got it back. I didn't get it.
Who's pushing it, Alton?
Farm Bureau and the drains and all of them.
Are in favor of it?
Favor of it, yes. Because it's going to hurt everybody. Even if you've got water coming off of your roof and it goes into a ditch, they want to control even that.
Yeah, I read some information about that.
I've been involved in it for about six months or better.
But we don't want them to be able to regulate or come on where something is so minucial and imminence.
And that's why we'd like to have a county commissioner to get on that.
C cap has already took a stance on that already, that they don't support it.
Any other public comment? Vera?
I'd like to ask if the commissioners can consider having air monitoring equipment bought by Act thirteen, which is directly related to Marcellus shale development. The air that's quality is changing because of thirty-eight compressor stations in our county since two thousand and eight. So if you would please consider that, and we can send you proposals for air monitoring, because there's a lot of citizens near the compressor stations complaining about the air quality and that they have to breathe now the toxins that are coming out of the... All the emissions from all these compressor stations. So would you like to consider air monitoring from Act thirteen money, since you were interested in flood gauges? And no comment, of course.
Any other public comment? Motion to adjourn?
I'd like to know if you also can do something about the sound system in the court systems in the courthouse, because you like... You want to spend money for improvements like windows, desks, shelves, and all that. Can you improve the sound system? It's being worked on right now and fixed?
Yes, that's what we were told.
And then, do you know what the Mill Road Housing is about that I passed by where Andres used to be? There's all this big housing, like condos. Do you know what that's about?
No. Any other public comment? Motion to adjourn?
We do have this one. It's a resolution, same that we did. It's a resolution taken as the agreement to handle the...
Cooperation agreement. Do we have the agreement? I'm not going to pistol and grab it if they have gone over.
Like, is it the same with prehab? Is it about the same on that unit?
Well, I haven't read it, so I'm not going to prove it without reading it. We're going to hear, read it, and study it.
All right. Let's see what we can do.
We use their templates, so it literally is the exact same. We just changed the name.
I understand that. We'll get back in.
I have one question.
Yes.
About the Keystone Hotel down right next to my establishment.
Yes.
They were talking about putting a halfway house there.
Okay.
I was wondering. I heard it was supposed to be coming through you. Most of the public comment I was at a meeting is, we just really wouldn't prefer it there. And if you guys had any control on it, just wanted to voice that opinion.
What public meeting did you have?
It was two or three weeks ago. It was at the Great Bend Borough meeting. There was two or three people from prehab. Tracy, I think, was there, a couple of other people. And it was about putting a halfway house in the old Keystone Hotel.
How many people were at that meeting? And I'm asking the question for a reason. Because we have gotten various stories, fact and fiction about this thing?
There was at least fifty. There was at least fifty, possibly sixty people there. There was, I think there was maybe two people that said, "Oh, it might be kind of a nice idea."
Where were they from?
On the outskirts of town, away from it. And I'm right next door to it, and it's my livelihood. And it's, and I have a heart. I want people to have a chance. These are people that have had, made a lot of bad mistakes in the past, and they, with a chance, they'll make bad mistakes again. And I just don't want them right next to my store, my livelihood.
As you know, that's up to Borough Council.
Right. And from what I understand, there's like two, there's like a couple members there that are for it. All the others are against it. So I just, I was, that's what I was understanding. And there's a petition going around right now also amongst the people.
All right. We've received, I've received a dozen calls this week. Alan Hall received several calls. I'm glad you brought this up. The phone calls I received indicated to me the district attorney is pushing this halfway house. He had told these people that Alan Hall was in favor of it, had signed everything, but that I was holding it up.
Hmm.
Now, I don't think that was not a true statement. But Alan's here. I received calls that said that? So don't let Alan speak for himself.
The answer is absolutely not true. You know, here's the bottom line. A lot of the stuff that goes on in this county, the county itself, county government is a conduit for a lot of programs. We have been, you know, kind of snickered in the past, so the commissioners have stood fast and said that, you know, our job isn't to force things in people's communities and to do things without people in their communities doing it. Communities run themselves. We don't govern the communities. So we've always said that, and just like happened with Forest City. If we get a letter from the council or the township supervisor, whoever's the elected people that are supposed to be in charge of the communities, they send us documentation saying that the community's in favor of it and they want something to happen. Then if it's something we can support that's not, of course, across the county, you know, then we try to support it. But until we get those letters, you know, we don't support it. And actually, the one that this is supposed to be approving, I got a big fat note on someplace, someplace, we didn't even put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Because we have gotten nothing. And that's what they were told. They were told that several weeks ago, that in order for that to even make the agenda, I need a letter from the Borough Township or the Borough Council stating that the borough was in favor of this and that they support it and they want this to happen.
We'll make sure we talk to the council a little bit more.
There you go. So that was my response, and then you brought other some stuff.
Yeah, it's about the same. It's the same.
Okay.
And how many people are they talking about for this halfway house?
No idea.
Thirteen or twenty-six, something like that.
It would be natural. When we're at that.
And what kind of a halfway house? Is it drug-related, alcohol-related?
Yes.
Do you want me to answer? It would be for ex-offenders, non-violent, non-sex offenders.
That's what we were told.
Any other questions?
Two questions. One, will we have those resolutions today, number one, that we asked for? And the second one is that in that housing, are we taking any illegals in?
I have no idea. Like I said, we didn't, that's not our control. That's the control. Which housing are you talking about? Because we're talking about different...
The gentleman's concerns.
Oh, I don't know. But like I said, we didn't support it. We're not making any intention to support that because the borough didn't support it, so... I mean, prehab has the right to take and purchase the property themselves if they want to and do it. There's no zoning there, so, you know, they could do that, but we don't have anything to do with it. Any other questions? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, you're open. Before you leave, Kathy, this is...
I have information on that.
Pretty good. The man's got good heart, good mind, too empty bed.
Website.
You don't have to sign that one.
We're not paying. Yeah. Because you won't be able to do anything. I don't want to... It's going to be a problem.
No, that's what I'm trying to...
It was a Great Men Borough meeting? And I'm surprised I saw that.
Oh, well.
It just... I didn't realize it was on. Didn't realize it was on the agenda for that night.
I have a transcript, and I'm not...
It's all over it.
Oh, yeah.
It was on the...
Was it really? I want to get those resolutions.
Motion number thirty-six.